regular city council meeting for Tuesday, March 2nd, 2021. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Ball.
Present.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Present.
Councilmember Cordova.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Victor Vega.
Here.
Mayor Janelle Osborne.
Here.
Mr. Malave, action from closed session?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. City council met in closed session tonight to discuss the one real property negotiations item. Councilmember Starbuck did recuse himself because he owns property within 500 feet of that site. Staff gave a presentation to council and council gave negotiating direction, but no reportable action was taken.
Thank you. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now, we will have a presentation by Steve Bridge regarding the Lompoc Valley Parks Recreation and Pool Foundation.
Madam Mayor, Councilmen, Staff, thank you for having me here today. I'm going to go through this pretty quickly. The foundation is really what I call is a co-op foundation. It takes committees, subcommittees, and allows them to operate under the umbrella. Today, we have seven committees. You must have 10 members. The foundation gives them nonprofit status, accounting, basic insurance guidance, and how to follow the rules. They establish their own mission and they control their own finances. Our plans are to be here to support other groups that may want to join, and you'll see one that has just recently joined. We're happy to work the city and get any grants that come that in that methodology. We've done that in the past, and we hope to continue to improve the community. The existing subcommittees today are the Falling Warriors, the Barking Park, the Motorsports, Riverbend Park, Lompoc Trails, Lompoc Senior Club, and we just had a Valley Sailing Program come on. A few, but not all of the past, there's the Frisbee, the Remote Vehicle Park, and the Paintball Park. I think that potentially as we go into the next phase of budgets and trying to figure out how to get everything done in the city, this might be a good vehicle for some of the issues that we're facing. Our mission is, or the Falling Warriors, I think many of you probably went to the opening of the Falling Warriors. They still maintain that, continue to put tiles up. They raised thousands of dollars for this, and they did it in a relatively short period of time. I know that seems like a long time up there, but it takes a long time to get things done. But if you get over to Beatty Park and go up there, I think it's something our city can be proud of, and they continue to work it. These are the kinds of organizations that helped them get that done, and it was in partnership with the city. The Barking Park, it's another great program. It's a city park. It's maintained by the committee. They do cleanup days once a month, they're painting once a year, they've installed concrete, they've fixed the sprinklers, they've done a lot of work out there, and they're out there helping to keep it safe and usable. They hope to continue to improve it, get a little larger parking lots and better signs. They put out a dog park calendar to raise funds. There's the Trails Committee. That's a bit of an eye chart. As you can see, each committee kind of did their own charts, but they're trying to develop trail system, and they're starting with the Bodger Property. The Bodger Trail up there is ranked number one in the area. They've already put in a Steel Ranger, I think it's called, and a Big Board. That's the trail in some of the area they're trying to develop and are successfully developing. And part of their things to be proud of is they actually went out there and, you know, got all the neighbors on board where the cars were parking. So I thought that was pretty impressive. They're in fundraising, they've done the kiosk, they're flagged, they've surveyed the area, and they're actually out there picking up Highway One to help their presence be known. There's the Motorsport Mission. That was a pretty controversial group, but they still maintain the park at River Park, and it's there for little kids to learn how to ride a motorsports. And they're still have the vision to see if they can develop something similar to what they had before. I've recommended they go to all-electric, but they rose, raised thousands of dollars, and a lot of that was grant funding, matching funds, and the city worked with us to get that. And, you know, maybe that wasn't the right place, time, or effort, but I think it shows what a small group of people can do when in partnership with the city. There's Riverbend Park. I don't know if you've been there, but it is one of the most impressive little parks in the city. I think I have an overview. There's an overview on the bottom right. Many, you know Dave, he runs the committee, and they have kids out there all the time. They have people come from, you know, all over the central coast to ride their bikes in that area, and it's something to be proud of, I think. They helped to actually get some funding to have a full-time or at least a part-time person there, and it'd be great to hold competitions and shows to bring people into town. And they're always looking for members to help. There's the Senior Club. This has been a impressive little group. It's trying to provide resort-type entertainment to the city population. And I think this group might be an interesting group to work with the city on, helping out in areas where you could use the expertise of somebody who's, you know, been around or go out and get funding. Dave, since this chart's been done, he's already at $35,000 in grants, and he's established an endowment fund. This is a group of people that could help the city if there was a good way to go about it, and there is. There is money out there for senior jobs. They want to do a buddy system, they want to do a quarterly Make-A-Wish for Seniors, scholarships, and they're doing a lot of this. They haven't got the thrift store yet, but they're already doing a lot of this on their own. This is the latest one. This fellow started Howard Harvey Memorial Valley Sailing. We went down and picked up, I think it was eight boats of the size you see in the bottom left-hand corner, and it's a brand-new committee. It's only been around about three months. I guess October, he got the boats, but it took us a couple of months just to get down. They were in the old Smithy's lot, but they've all been moved out towards Kachuma, and the hope is to help underprivileged kids learn how to sail. And I think that's cool. So, that's the Parks and Pool Foundation. I know it's a long name, we're looking at maybe changing that, but I think you can see just in what they've done so far that it's a pretty cool little thing going on in the city. And the foundation is standing by if the city would like to have other projects done. I personally think if there was a group for the soccer fields down at the River Park, I think that would be a great group to get in and get some funding and maybe get lights out there. But everybody has their own ideas of what might be good. But thank you for your time. I just wanted you to recognize what was going on and know that resource is there, especially as you're going through your budget process and goals and vision setting.
Thank you. City Manager Report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I want to start off first with just a quick reminder. So, we just started snowy plover nesting season. It began on the first yesterday. The Vandenberg Air Force Base, we had a meeting the other day, and they wanted to just remind everybody that it started because their goal is to keep that beach open the whole time, but they also have to report off to the Fish and Wildlife and the other entities that oversee them. So, it is critical for anyone who visits Surf Beach to be mindful of the areas that are off-limits to the public during this nesting season. Just a reminder, after the agreement was reached, was it a year ago, a year and a half ago, with all the required parties that were out there, it was a very large meeting, but such as Fish and Wildlife was out there, and to keep Surf Beach open all year long, the one caveat was that there was to be no egregious violations, otherwise they'd have to close the beach again. So, if we remember however many years it's been, that once we hit 50 violations, the beach was closed. Last year's, after it was left open, they still count the violations at upwards of 200 violations. So, at what point does it become egregious? I don't know, but at 200, that was substantially more than it was the year before. So, in us, the city, trying to work with the base, we want to make sure that everybody that goes out there, locals, visitors, or whatnot, you know, adhere to the areas that are open. The beach is still open, they just have those certain areas fenced off. We just don't want to see it closed again. So, if we can all do our part, if you see someone in the area that they shouldn't be in, ask them politely to step out of that area because we want to keep that beach open for everybody. Some really good news, you've probably seen or heard that the Beatty Park Playground is having, the official grand opening is going to be tomorrow. It is limited because of the social distancing from the health order, so we're going to be having a small grand opening group that's there, but we'll have everything, we have a little video about it with people trying out the equipment, we'll have the pictures and everything else from the opening. As a reminder, the park upgrade started in August of 2020 with funding from the state's Prop 68 per capita grant funds. The new park equipment has already been named what's called a triple national demonstration site. It meets stringent design standards in the three categories of inclusive playground designs so that everybody can do something in their youth play and also adult fitness. So, when you have kids that are playing on the playground, we have an area for everyone to still maintain as an adult the fitness. The current design was voted upon by the public during multiple outreach sessions. We had a total of 645 residents give their input on what they would like to see at the park in this new playground. So, remember, there's something for both the young and the older, I won't say old, but older out there. Lompoc Fire Department also completed work on equipment outfitting of a 2019 Dodge Ram utility truck. Brian just showed me pictures of it. It's the new one that'll be used as the new frontline rescue vehicle. This replaces the other one, the old 2008 into reserve status, and with the fleet challenges we have been facing, this is a very significant improvement for both the organization and the community. The last one, and this is a fun one, too. The Recreation Division for the city is sponsoring two different Easter events. It's hard to believe it's already Easter, but it is coming up. The first one, and I don't want anybody to go do this, but we're calling it Egg My Yard. So, what it is, it's a play on Easter and the eggs. So, what you can do is you'll be going and registering. If you hop to it, and you can get up to $30 is the cost, they'll bring out a bunny. Bunny will come out, and you have social distance, but you can see the bunny. They'll leave baskets of food, candy, eggs, and other miscellaneous goods on your front, so you sort of get egged on your front yard. Again, it's a $30 registration fee, and, you know, we want to have people sign up as soon as possible for that. The other one is an Easter egg drive-through. It is free to whoever participates. It's fully sponsored by our businesses, our nonprofits, our different social groups that are out in the community. That one's going to be Saturday, April 3rd, at Ryan Park, and it'll be from 10:00 a.m. until the supplies run out. The Easter bunny at the end of the drive-through, and they'll be there to take pictures of the bunny near the windows and post on social media. And goodie bags will include candy-filled eggs and other miscellaneous treats. So, again, if you want to do the other one, better hop to it, as they say, with the Easter bunny. So, that was all I had.
Was there going to be a staff presentation or not? After consent? It has been moved? Okay. We will now move to, oh, were there any questions for City Manager? Seeing none, we'll move to Consent Calendar. We'll open the floor for public comment on Consent Calendar items 1 through 4. You can call in at 805-875-8201. Remember to mute your TV, PC, or radio. Did we have any written comments for Consent Calendar?
No, ma'am, not for consent.
Thank you. Again, the number to call is 805-875-8201, and remember to mute your TV, PC, or radio while we wait to see if there's any calls. Consent calendars are considered to be routine and will be enacted after one motion in the form listed below. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless good cause is shown prior to the council vote. Any items withdrawn from the Consent Calendar for separate discussion will be addressed immediately before the second oral communications near the end of the meeting. Seeing no one call in, we will close public comment on Consent Calendar, and I will bring it back to Council for requests for pull or a motion to accept. Councilmember Vega.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept Consent Calendar, and I'd like to make a comment here for the public and anyone listening that item number four that was done between the Planning Commission and the Community Development Division, revisions to the Architectural Review Guidelines relating to permit requirements for certain restaurants and alcohol service regulations on mobile and sidewalk vendors, bicycle parking, side yard setback, fence heights, and temporary sign regulations, were all positive changes to simplify moving forward here with the city. I just wanted to note that because I thought it was pretty positive that everyone agreed on simplifying some of these items and clarifying, so just wanted everybody to know we're moving forward.
Councilman Cordova.
Present.
And we have a second. Any questions, concerns? Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes 5-0. And I understand we have a staff presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, and the public watching online. My name's Brian Fetterman, interim chief of the Fire Department, and following the last council meeting, there was some discussion in the goal-setting area with respect to one of our fire stations. So, after discussions with the City Manager, we thought just a quick little historical timeline for the community and for some of the newer council members as we move forward. One thing you'll note is that actually, it says Station 51. That's not a typo. The county did a restructuring of all fire stations within the county and apparatus, and so our numerics changed. That was to create a simplistic approach from a regional concept so that we don't have duplications of vehicle numbers and station numbers throughout the county. So, the fire station on South G Street is called Station 51 now. And a little piece of that history, Station 51 now on South G Street, back in 1875 is when the Fire Department was established, and the photo on the left was actually when the station was a combination city hall and fire station in 1891. Pretty cool photo. Looks somewhat similar in concept to what it is today, and it's also where the location resides. The middle photo that you see is in 78 when construction took place on the front portion of the fire station, and I'll elaborate a little more on what I mean by the front. And then the photo on the right is the current station today. This is looking from the north end into the alley at the current Station 51, and I wanted to get a side profile of the building to kind of provide some context. So, the front section that I referred to in 1977 was when the single-story piece of the building was demolished and this two-story unit was put in place. It's currently 6,500 square feet. It consists of the administrative offices, storage supply rooms for EMS, and the living quarters on the second floor, as well as the apparatus bay. The middle section, which you can see this seam right here, all the way back to here, was built in 1957. It's 2,300 square feet. It houses the training room that all personnel use, the captain's office, one downstairs bathroom with showers, as well as two apparatus bays that are used for storage of equipment. And then the most historical, oftentimes a little bit spooky, is the old jail, somewhere between the 20s and the 50s that was built. If you ever drive down the alley next to the mural, you'll see one of the old steel boards that was used to bring those to be housed in the jail through, and there's still some old cell doors back there, so pretty neat. It's significant to identify these three separate components as I go through the timelines from a historical piece, if I can. So, many of you know, following the Public Safety Commission, in 2004, there was an ad hoc committee that was formed that did a deep look into public safety from both police and fire, and subsequent to some of the findings by that volunteer group within our community, Robert Olson and Associates was hired in 2007 to do a fire protection services for the city of Lompoc in planning for the future. And it was around that time that a true third-party consultant came in and looked at some of our infrastructure needs and staffing needs. And then, of course, we had the recession challenges, so moving forward on some of those recommendations were put at a hold until the city could come back around. When Chief Ladapow got here, in 2012, we started a fire service master plan, so they took a deep look into the history of operations of our department, and subsequently, that report and its recommendations were adopted by council in 2014. And along with the performance measures, our infrastructure again was identified as a significant challenge to our growth. So, we hired Eland Spies and Height to come in and do a seismic evaluation. There's been a lot of conversation about the seismic stability or instability of Station 51, and the summary report yielded that the building is very likely to be partially or completely non-functional as a fire station in the event of an earthquake. So, we turned around and consulted with Frank Shipper Construction Company to do a seismic rough order of magnitude statement for cost and conceptual schedule. There's some, as I did some history and research on this, again, this was a conceptual conversation and estimation of what it would take to retrofit the building, and also, to Mr. Starbuck's point at the last meeting, about where we would house the personnel that was all-inclusive in this presumed $3.2 million cost for the facility. So, what we did is we started doing some work with, through our Hazard Mitigation Plan, through OES and through FEMA, to see if we could do some grant submissions for retrofitting of the station. We also subsequently looked at a review and design of a new fire station, which was presented to council in 2016 at the north end of the city to try to combat some of the challenges with Station 1, now 51. And as we know that that wasn't moved forward, we still continue to look at the challenges. In 2019, OES, following some of those grant submissions, notified us that the project was ineligible because it wasn't viewed as feasible or effective as a long-term solution so that we wouldn't be moving forward in the hazard mitigation process with them. And it kind of sat by the wayside for a little bit as we looked at some options and some CIP adjustments and how we could move forward, and what kind of brought this to your attention was in 2019, there was a bit of a shaker off the coast of Ventura, and immediately the following days, the crews noticed new cracks in the building and two of our doors that wouldn't open. They racked in the door framing. So, working with Mr. Luther and his team, we had the original Eland Spies and Height come back out and look at the building again to do an assessment. He advised that from what he could see, it was no imminent safety concern, different than what was identified in the first phase, but again, noting that there wasn't any seismic compliance issues that were adjusted from the 2014 report. So, a very superficial overlook at the building. I bring some of that timeline up and to provide a little bit of clarity on, we have yet to really open up the walls and really look at what the actual needs are. There've been very high-flight looks at the building, looking at the age comparisons of the three units. Some significant reports were made that the difference between the three buildings, they were not built together, so if one racks and moves in an earthquake and hits the other one, it could cause damage as opposed to them moving together. And on top of the seismic issues, you know, as we've grown as a department, the staffing, the amount of people that are in the building, I don't think it was ever designed to handle. That's where we're having some serious issues with our facilities. The restrooms and the plumbing are starting to be challenged by the age and the usage. We've had several leaks at different levels in the floor and a couple of facilities that are currently non-operational right now. The workspaces that have been identified, as you know, apparatus needs, for some reason, these fire trucks keep getting bigger, and so these old fire stations can't house them, and that's a challenge. We still struggle with appropriate gender accommodations for female firefighters, the training and the growth in the future. So, in the CIP request, and I know there's a lot that the council and the community is dealing with from an infrastructure standpoint for our entire community, our hope is that we can actually invest in getting a real comprehensive look into this facility to figure out a good strategic plan moving forward of what will best accommodate our community in the long term. So, again, my goal is just to kind of provide a little bit of a timeline and some history and some clarity, hopefully in a few areas, and I hope I did that. So, if you have any questions, otherwise, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Any questions for Chief Fetterman? Councilmember Ball.
Thank you for your presentation, sir. I really appreciate that information. Two quick questions for you. There's some of us that might like to take credit for the quote remodel that's now 44 years old. It's a 44-year-old remodel for the front section. Starting with the newest part of the building, what kind of shape is that in?
Significant challenges, just like the rest. There was a portion in the historical files that I could dig through that some internals were done in the 90s, some wall configurations in the office, some upgrades to some of the restrooms, and there was also a back section on the middle piece that had some roof sloping added to it in the 90s. So, I was asked why I thought we did some improvements in the 90s. That is true, but more of the, just the layout, not the actual structural components. So, the entire facility is seeing the challenges, and much like with our fleet, facilities maintenance is having a hard time keeping up. There are some imminent concerns. There's a balcony that is starting to pull away from the front of the building, and we've been talking to facilities about what we might need to do to just remove that altogether as we move forward, as a more of a significant imminent concern.
Thank you. Second question, when it comes to appropriate gender accommodations, I assume it's the goal of the Fire Department moving into the future that we would like to accommodate females and males at the fire station. Can you elaborate a little bit on if we were to hire a couple of females, what are the challenges of that building with keeping the genders separate?
Yeah, it's always our goal to do that. The fire service as a whole is only represented by 7% female across the nation in the fire service. It is a significant challenge, and trying to encourage young women to step into this job is maybe something they've never thought of before. So, we're definitely trying to do that as a fire service from an educational standpoint, especially in our community with Allen Hancock right here. It's a great opportunity even in the police force or in the ambulance world. But upon hiring a female, right now, we have our admin aide who is a female and our fire marshal who's a female. We have one designated bathroom in the whole building for them to use as an identified. The other ones, you have to make sure you lock the door, and then it renders the rest of the bathroom unusful for everybody else. So, I definitely don't think that's appropriate. I don't think it's, at Station 2, we have a challenge where our bedrooms are used as offices, and so it makes it very challenging if you have a female firefighter with you and you need to go over a performance evaluation. It's not appropriate to bring them into your bedroom and have that conversation. So, it's a concern of ours. It's something that we've looked at, if there's some ways we can lay out the building differently internally to accommodate that, but I definitely hope that wouldn't be our hindrance to hiring in the future.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Any other questions for Chief? Seeing none, thank you very much for that history and better understanding for all of us. We will now go on to oral communications. This is three minutes to speak on issues in our city. You may call in at 805-875-8201. Remember to mute your PC, radio, or TV. Remember to mute your PC, radio, or TV. Madam Clerk, did we receive any general oral communications?
No ma'am, nothing.
Thank you. No written general oral communications were received. Once again, the number to call, 805-875-8201. Please mute your PC, radio, or TV when your call is put through. And this is oral communication on any city matter for three minutes maximum. You're live in the Lompoc City Council meeting. You have three minutes to provide your public comment.
Hello, good evening. My name is Marcia Wertz and I'm a resident of Lompoc, California. I'm a downtown area resident. And I'm just calling to reiterate a concern I have with the ongoing kind of an infrasound noise vibration type of a hum that I, I myself am experiencing for my residents. I'm in, on the West Walnut area. And I've communicated this in writing to the city of Lompoc as about approximately one year ago in March of 2020 and have since been following up with communications regarding this. It's just a general low-tone vibration, noise, chronic type of an infrasound hum. And as I have read other comments on local social media forums from other residents regarding this very type, exact same thing that they've experienced and have been up until just the present time experiencing, it does concern me that it, that it's causing other, another disturbance or it could be affecting other residents as well, as well. So that's all I wanted to do is just comment on that. Thank you very much for your time. And once again, this is Marcia Wertz. I'm just commenting on this issue because it's, it can be a disturbance, especially during the evening hours. Thank you.
Thank you for your call. Seeing no additional calls, we will close oral communications and bring it back to the agenda for appointments. Tonight, we have council appointments to the Library Commission. We have one at-large term ending January 2023. And we also have a at-large position ending 1/2024. Currently, we have an applicant for one of the positions, Olivia Magagna. I will entertain a motion for her appointment and just as a note, remember to choose a term. Councilmember Cordova.
I will go ahead and nominate Mrs. Magagna for the 2024 term.
Thank you.
I'll second.
And we have a second. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes 5-0. Welcome to the Library Commission, Olivia. Item number six, direction regarding complaint from Lompoc citizens about noise emanating from private property within the county of Santa Barbara. Approval to send letter to county to address noise impact. And we have city manager to present. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, mayor and council. So this was a council request to be brought back from the December 15th council meeting when the council majority requested the item. So the city did receive some complaints from residents living on the city's eastern, northeastern border, I guess you could say, concerning possible noise from nearby farming operations. The noise is reported to be from large agricultural fans that come on when the temperatures drop too low. Some residents had actually petition, put a petition together, sent it off to the county requesting something be done because it is outside the city limits. However, being part of a, an agricultural community does bring with it some unusual living experiences, with one of those unusual experiences being agricultural noises generated by the different farming operations. City staff does understand that there are considerations on both sides of the issue. So we did put together a letter that was drafted to the county requesting any future consideration also be of farming operations be given to the nearby residential areas for items that might be related to noise. If council did decide to move forward with the item, the letter would be sent out under my signature, but it's being brought back for discussion.
Thank you. Council, questions for city manager? Councilmember Cordova.
So just for clarification, the task is to identify whether we want to go ahead and send out the letter on behalf of those residents. I read the staff report, it does identify that although the noise is coming from non-city limits, meaning county limits, the residents are within our city limits that are being affected.
The ones that have called in, yes.
Seeing no other questions, we will go ahead and open the floor for public comment. If you would like to call in and speak on item number six, you are welcome to do so. The number to call is 805-875-8201. Remember to mute your TV, PC, or radio when your call is put through. Good evening. You're live in the Lompoc City Council meeting. You have three minutes to provide public comment. Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Timothy Brummer. And I would like to state that these big wind machines, there's up to 40 of them in the strawberry fields. And they have a very high noise level. It's like 10 times the amount of decibels that the state recommends for being able to sleep at night. And as a consequence, hundreds of people can't sleep at night and this causes very serious health and financial impacts. And also, we have retained a lawyer, Phil Cinco from Santa Maria. And he researched this and has determined that these wind machines are not protected by right-to-farm law for a number of reasons. There's like five different reasons that, that they're not covered by the right-to-farm law. So it, there's, there's no issue really with, with the county going and, and having some kind of regulation to control the noise from these machines. Does anybody have any questions?
Thank you for your call. Call-ins are one-way transmission. You get to state to us your concerns and share any additional information. It is not a, a discussion point. So, you have a minute 36 left that you're welcome to utilize if you have any additional information. Minute 36 left that you're welcome to utilize if you have any additional information.
No, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Again, the number to call is 805-875-8201. And remember to mute your TV, PC, or radio. Madam Clerk, did we have any written communications?
Yes, there was one letter received from Campbell Ranches, everybody. It was disseminated to all of council, placed on the website, and that's it.
Seeing no one call in, we will close public comment on this and bring it back for council, councilmember Cordova.
I, I think that in review of the information, option two would be what I would recommend for the council, sending out a letter to the county, kind of expressing, you know, our concern. I think supporting in a way, we're supporting the sentiment of the residents that, you know, this is an issue, it has become an issue. And, and that we support a resolution for this on behalf of our residents, I think is the best course of action for, for our city and see hopefully where that takes us. And hopefully we can see a change. There is, the staff report also talks about a recent change from what that has historically been farmed, what has been farmed there and what is being farmed now and that change. If there's a violation or not, I think that they'll have to figure it out county, county level. Not sure I would recommend yet for us to take on that task and that cost. But I think supporting the sentiment of our residents, I would go with option two and send out a letter in support of that and see if that will help the situation.
Were there any changes to the letter that you wanted to be seen, given your choosing option two, which is provide other direction? It's actually, option one is send the proposed letter.
Oh, I thought option one was to provide and investigate the incidents and complaints.
So the staff recommendations, item one is direct city manager to send the letter or item, option two is provide other direction. So you're just changing the number on what you're recommending?
Yeah.
Okay.
I say send out the letter.
Okay.
And I don't have any changes to the letter. I read the letter.
Okay, that's fine. Just wanted to make sure, given the, councilmember Starbucks.
I was, I said it when we talked about this in December before, you know, I, I grew up there and my parents still live out there. This is a county, it's, it's an issue in the county, it's not a city problem here. If, if we don't want them out there, then we should boycott strawberries in Lompoc and then they won't grow any for us. I'm, I'm going to oppose this letter to the county.
Thank you. Do I have a second for councilmember Cordova's motion? I will give it its second. Any other questions or concerns? Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes 4-1 for you to send out the letter to the county on behalf of our residents being impacted by this. Thank you so very much. All right. Item number seven, discussion concerning formation of a nonprofit organization to benefit the city of Lompoc. And that once again is our city manager.
Thought I'd just stay up here. So, thank you again, mayor and council. So this was also a council request to bring back the possibility or an option for a city-sponsored nonprofit. So the request was centered at that time towards the cost of creating a nonprofit as the thought might be that it could be too expensive, as well as what would that structure look like, because there are different ways you can structure the nonprofit. So staff did discuss the cost for the creation of a city-sponsored nonprofit and estimated that a possible one-time cost of $1,300 with about 15 hours of staff time. $1,300 would be any different kinds of legal fees, as well as the submission of the forms to the state to get it all processed. There would be some additional staff time on an annual basis, such as filing the reports with the state, but that would be considered minor, a minimal cost in staff time. So the decision for a nonprofit actually has a number of benefits for the city of Lompoc, such as if an individual would like to donate things such as land or funds, I always like money, or anything else to the nonprofit, the city then has the ability to issue a donation form such that they could claim it on their taxes and, and use it as a write-off. Others would be not just individuals, but if a group wanted to come forward, and I know there had been some discussion from the cannabis industry liking to, you know, wanting to do some kind of a donation. So that could be done again with, through the nonprofit with the ability to give them also a form, giving them the ability to write off the, the donation on their taxes. However, the most critical part really is having the nonprofit for the ability to partner with the city in its different grant submissions. In today's world of grants, grants will at times request a partnership with an NGO or a nongovernmental organizational entity, and that would allow the city to submit for more grants than we currently have now the ability to do. So we would partner with this nonprofit and with the city as, as we put together the grants, we would use these two in conjunction, the city with the nonprofit. Sometimes even having the NGO, the nongovernmental organizational position on that gives the city more points towards the grants when they're looked at and viewed. So that would be a benefit to the city also. City council also requested what other local entities or cities might have had a nonprofit, and there's a full list in the, in the report, but they do include Atascadero, Grover Beach, Morro Bay, Paso Robles, Slow County, Santa Maria, Solvang, and Templeton. So there are a number of different agencies out there that have this ability to partner and put together grants and other opportunities. So there might be some questions, you know, what are some examples of grants that we need? You have to have this partnered to submit the grants, it can't just be the city. Some of these would be grants to California nonprofit art organizations for public art. So if we wanted to work on a, a project that we are doing more art projects, we have all the murals, but there's also opportunities for others. I've been in other agencies where there's part of the CIP process, there's a little piece, and then it's, could be statues or other artwork that goes up around the city. Grants to California public or private entities for technical advancements and energy efficiencies, having your own electric company, that would be something that might benefit, benefit us. Grants to California nonprofits in eligible counties for programs that benefit local communities. So, a lot of times, we as our Lompoc community fits a lot of the designations, but we were missing this one piece of having a nonprofit. So from a staff perspective, we do recommend moving forward with the creation of the nonprofit. But as I said earlier, there's also the consideration, and what is this structure going to be? How do you, is it the council sit as the board? Is it, there's many, many different structures, and I'm going to actually have our city attorney discuss the different structures on how that could come about.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. I'm just going to stay here to give that part of the presentation, and it is covered in the staff report. But it is one of the most important issues to consider when deciding whether and how to start a nonprofit is how it's going to be structured. So that is, how many members are going to sit on the board of the nonprofit to make decisions, to control how the nonprofit's funds are spent, amendments to the bylaws, that type of a thing. We do recommend that it be an odd number of members on the board so that you don't have to deal with issues about ties very often anyway. And generally, it's a five-member or seven-member board, but there is no legal rule about how many members, any minimum or maximum number of members, it can be any number of members on the board. And then, with respect to the issue of who, who are the board members going to be, that goes directly to the issue of how much control the city is going to have over the nonprofit entity. So the nonprofit entity is a completely separate legal entity from the city. So, it can make its own decisions about how it wants to spend the money that it raises. It can make its own decisions about how it wants to amend its bylaws, about what its purpose is. And for that reason, the thought is that if the goal of creating this nonprofit is to raise money for city public purposes, for the, for the city's benefit, that city may want to have control over voting control on the board of the nonprofit. You can do that in a number of ways, or you can choose not to have any control. But there's at least three options, and number one in the staff report is for just the city council members to serve as the five board members on the nonprofit. And another option is to have a mixture of city council members and non-city council members. Non-city council members can include members of city staff, or they could include just general members of the public that the council appoints to the board. Another option is to just have a board for the nonprofit made up of completely non-city council members that could be appointed by the council, or you could come up with some other way to determine who are the board members. other way to determine who are the board members. So going through those options, the staff report talks about what maybe the pros and cons of each one of those options are. So if you have a nonprofit board that is entirely made up of city council members, that definitely gives, of course, the city complete control over the nonprofit and the way that the nonprofit fundraises and the way that the nonprofit spends the money that it fundraises. But it also, and it also is efficient, because we can hold those nonprofit board meetings, you know, one a year or one a quarter, at the same time as we hold city council meetings, because you're all here at that time. And the board would be subject to the Brown Act, so we would, that would also work with holding the meetings at the same time as the council meetings. But the potential drawback of having the council serve as the nonprofit board is that private entities may be hesitant to donate to an organization that might be perceived as political. It may be perceived as political if the city council itself is the nonprofit board. Option B, the middle of the road option, is to have some council members serve on the board and some non-council members serve on the board. If there are members of the public on the board, appointed by the council, or determined in some other way, that could be beneficial, because it can be perceived as a public-private partnership between the city and the community. There could be one council member on the board, there could be two, there could be three. Council could also choose to have certain spots on the board designated for certain city staff members by title or position. Or council could just say a staff member that they, that the council chooses who to appoint whenever there's a vacancy. A nonprofit that has some council members on it and non-council members on it would still be subject to the Brown Act if the city staff essentially staffs the board and the city provides a facility for the board to meet. That's going to count as funds that the nonprofit receives from the city, and therefore be subject to the Brown Act, and the meetings would need to be, have posted agendas and only discuss items that are on those posted agendas. The third option is having a nonprofit board that has no council members on the board. There's a number of ways to do this, like I've already kind of gone over. But it can just be five, seven members of the public that the city council appoints and replaces whenever there's a vacancy. Or there's a number of other ways that you could determine who you want to serve on that board. And the benefit of having, a potential benefit of having non-city council members on the board, such as members of the business community in town, is that they may have more networking resources to fundraise and obtain funds for the nonprofit to assist the city. Another option, if the council wanted to have a completely hands-off approach, is to have no council members on the board, and then whenever there is a vacancy, have the board itself vote to select a new person to serve on the board and fill that vacancy. There is the potential for a board that has no council members on it to not be subject to the Brown Act. It would depend on how we phrase the purpose of the board in the bylaws. But I think, you know, a conservative approach would just be to have that board comply with the Brown Act in any event. So those are the different options on structure. I am available for questions on those, and the city manager is available for questions on any of the rest of the staff report.
So this is a time for clarity questions. After we take public comment, then we should work on responses. So again, this is time for questions, concerns, clarity, and then after we take public comment, we'll work on recommendations and structure. Council member Vega.
Mr. Malloy, after looking at the list here of the other cities with already that have nonprofits, do we not also have structures like this already in place here in Lompoc? Because it seems to me like you got friends of the fire department, you got friends of the Morro Bay Harbor Department. We have other structures, as we had a presentation earlier, that show that there are structures already in place without spending additional funds at this time. Would they be able to also be used as points, as the city manager stated, that we do have nonprofits in place if you were trying to win a grant? I understand that we're trying to get a separate board and committee and commission or a board, but you know, I'm kind of hesitant to add more, more structures to an area where we already have a lot of committees and commissions in place already, so.
There definitely are other nonprofit corporations in the city of Lompoc that the city could partner with. Of course, those other nonprofit corporations have to agree to partner with the city, and we don't know whether they would or would not agree on any given grant or any given project. I think the thought or the intent here would be that if the nonprofit that we create has some element of control that the city exercises over it, the city would be able to ensure that we would have a nonprofit to cooperate with the city. So that's just something to consider.
No, I got you. Thank you so much. I just think that we had a presentation earlier by the Park and Pool Foundation, and they did indicate a willingness to work with the city if there was some other way without spending money at this time during COVID and other times where we have budget concerns, I think that would be more prudent than creating another entity that really there's not enough revenue to do, and I think that would be a waste of money at this time. Thank you.
Council member Cordova.
The nonprofits in other cities that were listed in the staff report, do we know if those are separate nonprofits, such as maybe perhaps the list that Lompoc already has? Or are these nonprofits that were spearheaded and created by, let's say, the council or city staff and are, just ran independently as nonprofits?
You know, that was a good question, and I did not get that answer. I know some of these, you can tell they're the fire or the police departments. So those are specific to those agencies, so those wouldn't be ones that we would want to partner with. But, excuse me, things where you see like Grover Beach Community Foundation, those would be ones that would be more specific to the same, I can't guarantee it's the same setup of what we're talking about tonight, but that's what they're more geared towards.
Okay. Okay. I do have follow-up comments, but I understand what Mayor Osborne said, so I think I'll wait after public comment for any kind of recommendation.
Thank you. Council member Ball.
I think I'm going to wait until the end, too. I've got a lot to say, but I'll.
Council member Starbuck.
I'm not sure I really follow the purpose of why we're doing this. We have a police foundation, we have a fire foundation, we have nonprofits all over town. I doubt we're going to compete with them. Last meeting, no grant writer, now we're looking at, we need a grant writer to write grants. Well, we know what staff's answer to that was going to be is, it takes several people and staff to generate all these. Excuse me, so it appears that no matter what we do, we're going to wind up with a huge amount of staff, not a 15-hour and a couple of hours of attorney. Once again, it just seems like we're doing a growth of government here for something that we have nothing in the pipeline for.
Council member Ball.
For clarity, I think you had mentioned, city manager, about the cannabis industry. Do you want to elaborate a little bit on that and why that is a slightly different situation in terms of them possibly donating funds to a city purpose and how that might be challenging with certain other?
Yeah, I would, just in the current atmosphere of right now, though the cannabis industry is being gracious in trying to make a donation, both the fire and police, I'm hoping not to speak for them, but they would rather not at this point in time accept that type of a contribution. However, if the city had their own nonprofit, then it could go to the city, and then we in turn could then, as a nonprofit, could go purchase, if they donated money for equipment or vehicles or something, we could then go do that. Does that make sense?
Can you explain the difference of if monies are donated to a city nonprofit versus another nonprofit? What, how might the city council approach those funds and allocate versus?
Well, if it is operated by the city council, we'll say if that's the direction, as monies come in, and the council would also be the ones that would make a recommendation on where to spend those monies. If it was a different nonprofit, they would have the ability to take the money in and then spend it in any, any other place that they would like to spend it, without any real oversight or consideration from the council would be, it's up to that nonprofit.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff before we go to public comment? Seeing none, we will go to public comment on this item. The number to call is 805-875-8201, 805-875-8201. Remember to mute your TV, PC, or radio, 805-875-8201. Madam Clerk, was there any written communication?
No, ma'am, nothing.
Thank you. 805-875-8201, and remember to mute your TV, PC, or radio when you call in. The moment I say we are closing public comment, it often rings, so I will say one more time, 805-875-8201 is the number to call if you'd like to comment on item seven. Seeing no one call, we will close public comment on item seven and bring it back to council for discussion. Council member Cordova.
So I'm a little conflicted on this particular item, because I do understand the request and I guess the purpose of what the nonprofit would be for, I get that. But it also seems to me like the task to have City Hall be able to control the nonprofit is almost impossible, and keeping it a nonprofit. Based on what I read on the staff report, once we have control over it, then it kind of deems it as not so much of a nonprofit, but rather an extension or an arm to City Hall. I do get what the purpose of it would be for, I'm just not seeing an avenue on any of these options where the city would be able to maintain control of the decisions or the funds, or the funding that is received. And I wonder if there is a difference between creating an additional structure like this or if staff was to find a grant that is beneficial to the city, could they go to any one of the existing nonprofits and say, hey, here is this grant, we would like to apply for it as a city, and we would like to partner with you as a receiving engine for this grant, and this is what we would like to see, and then come into collaboration with them? I don't know. I'm not closed to the idea, I'm just, would like a little more clarification as to what the recommendation would be then, if the outcome is for the city to have control over it so that we can properly spend the money where it needs to go.
So for myself, I would look at option number one. There are different nonprofits out there, but then we as a city would have to try to, you know, figure out which nonprofit would be best to work with, get on their schedule, because we just don't go up to the, to the board. We have to, we'd have to go through their process to get on their agenda, ask them, explain to what's going on. It's a, it would be definitely more work on the city's side for staffing to do that with a nonprofit, any of the other nonprofits that are out there. Be it the city council serves as a board, it definitely makes the turnaround quicker on any of the grant submissions, because we would have the direction on what the council would like to do, versus trying to figure out which nonprofit would be best for the city staff to go out and try and meet with, coordinate with, partner with. So that's why with the city staff's recommendation was for the creation of it.
Okay, and although, you know, the drawback to it as listed is, you know, that it may be perceived as a political organization because of the fact that it's all the council on the board.
Right. The thing we have to try to remember is that this isn't, you're, it's not going to be a typical nonprofit. It is a nonprofit by all legal definitions and whatnot, but it's really the designation, that's why I was saying earlier, was the most critical piece is as we go forth with different grant opportunities, that we have an avenue of partnering with this, if we went forward with this, to have this nonprofit be the nonprofit that's needed to be able to check the different boxes when the grants say, are you partnering with another nonprofit in the city? Yes, we are. It's becoming a little more cohesive together to know that we're going in the same direction versus any of the other, any of the other nonprofits, if we were to try and partner with them, they might not go in the same direction that the council was desiring.
Okay, so although it can fundraise, the main target would be grant, you know, application and grant, receiving grants for the benefit of the community. So to those that feel maybe would this be competitive to some of our nonprofits, it could be, but it doesn't, but that's not the main focus of it. The main focus of it is to be able to go out there, gain grants for this purpose of improvements or, or, you know, the benefit of the city in certain specific areas or?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Council member Vega.
You know, Mr. Trup, I think that I understand the structure here that we're trying to accomplish here. We're hoping that the cannabis industry donates directly to the city so it can go to the general fund, so we can actually use that money, and I get it. It's not so much points for grants, because I believe we have enough structures out there that already were nonprofits that we could utilize. So I think the, you know, to be clear here, the goal is so that the city can control any donations that they perceive that the cannabis industry, as council member Ball mentioned, because it is a reality that they may be willing to donate. So it'd be better to control that money instead of working with a nonprofit. My issue here is, I think we should try and partner with our nonprofits. I understand the structure, so I think the part that we're trying to gain points by working with a nonprofit is already there. And I think that the timing of this, spending money that we can't recapture at this time to gain points, I think it's mostly, I just think it's, the timing is a little bit off. I think that we're spending money here that we don't need to spend, because we already have an entity if we really wanted to apply for grants using nonprofits here as a partner. So I kind of think that our timing here of spending money when we don't have to, or we don't need to, because we don't see anything returned at this time, I think we should just think twice about it at this time. So, thank you.
Council member Ball.
I'll take a slightly different approach. I think there's no time like the present. I think what we're, in regards to the cannabis industry here specifically, it has been, it's happened a couple of times where I've learned, they have tried to reach out to a couple of nonprofits, tried to donate something, and then had it kicked back, and they're willing to give, they're willing to step up and do something nice for our community. This is one way, aside from grant possibilities, which is amazing, it may save us some staff time, whereas we don't have to keep tracking down a board every quarter to go figure out how we can get something to move. But if we can create a clear path in today's current scenario, that the cannabis industry can step up and start to help our community, I know they're anxious to do so, and I think something else about either council controlling this or having a partnership between council and some people within the community, is that it's a strategic approach to a specific thing. And so I know we're talking about grants, there's obviously a lot of nonprofits that can help with grants. But for me, this is an opportunity for us to take advantage of the industry that we have right now, that is willing to help, that's making money, and on top of that, I have spoken with. And on top of that, I have spoken with tens, twenties, hundreds of people within our community that want to know what the industry is doing for our community. And they, the industry is looking for a way to show that they can pony up and help. So to me, in that, all hands on deck, we need the help. I don't see anything wrong with this. To the city attorney's point about transparency in the Brown Act, by us incorporating that as a practice at this structure, that is pure transparency for the community. This isn't backroom anything. This isn't making deals. This isn't your friends. This isn't anybody's club. This is a very transparent way of stepping up and filling a gap. So for me, I'm in big support of this. I think it could help us, at least in the short term and the midterm, answer some of our shortcomings. So that's my opinion.
Before I yield the floor to Councilwoman Cordova, the investment currently would be about $1,300. Any grant we apply for is going to come back at far higher dollars and immediately recoup that investment of staff time and $1,300 to be able to be more competitive as well as apply for NGO grants that we currently cannot apply for, even with the nonprofits that exist in our community. Many may not meet some of the criterias that are out there because of their very specific purpose. Secondly, my understanding, and I'm sure the city attorney can clarify this, the charter dictates how the board functions and who they report to. And it works in partnership with us because no matter what the board decides to go forward on and attempt to get the grant or accept funding, that ultimately has to come to the city council for final approval to accept those grants and those funds and those dollars that are then passed into our, our general fund budget. So there is very specific wording that's utilized in the charter for this nonprofit that says it is a direct correlation to support city projects, city grants, city departments. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's right. We would, we would include that language in the charter or the bylaws. There is the ability for the nonprofit board to amend the bylaws and amend the charter. But I think the way that we would handle that is say, in the bylaws, when they're adopted, no amendment to the bylaws is allowed unless the city first gives its approval.
Okay. To the last part, I think Councilmember Ball is absolutely correct. This whole purpose is to provide additional opportunities to improve our community and different options for not just the cannabis industry, but others in our community who want us support. But maybe the library foundation isn't the right fit or the police foundation isn't the right fit. So there are designs of a community foundation that encompasses most of what appears to be predominantly general fund concerns. It's great to see there's opportunities even for utility options to improve our community by going after some NGO grants there. That was a nice surprise to see. I wasn't aware of those. So yes, I think your easiest option right now informing it is to use us as a city council. You also have the option to have a mixture where you have a seven-member board. And I, I throw this out there for consideration because we already have committees and commissions. And my first thought when I was looking at the different options was perhaps we take the chair of each of our other commissions that already exist for public safety, beautification and appearance, the library and the Parks and Rec. That's four members. Have a single council member sit on it. So there is easily five positions already easily filled. And then for the seven, add two business community members so that we definitely get those that are in the business community being able to advocate back to that population of why they're involved and why it's an option for corporate and small businesses to donate back to the city. This would create the seven-member board. It would be easily filled except for the two outside members to make applications and those could be appointed by council. And I, I understand this would still all require the Brown Act and transparency. So I think it would still, you know, give us all those things we need without it being an appearance of a 100% political board because it's all council members. So I throw that concept out there because we are going to find this grant world and funding world and donation world very, very, very competitive throughout 2021 and into the next several years. And when you look at other communities that have these kinds of organizations, they've been able to move things leaps and bounds. And we need everything in our toolkit as we move forward. Councilmember Cordova.
And I would be hesitant to just label this proposed nonprofit as an engine to receive monies from the cannabis industry. I really dislike that 100%. I don't think that that's the intent or the purpose of this because I think our needs go beyond that. And I fully understand when certain nonprofits or organizations turn down money or donations from, from, from that source or, I, I get that. And, and everybody reserves their right to operate, again, their nonprofit based on their beliefs and, and their, what they would like to see as action-oriented items for, for their causes. But I, listening to what Mayor Osborne is proposing, I was going to say too that I don't like the idea of having a nonprofit be made up of solely council members because I think then there's, there's a perceived control, you know? I think a combination of council with public and with staff is, is probably the best solution. And I do agree that there's a lot of opportunities that are going to come up for funding in the next year or two, even post-pandemic, that we don't want to miss the boat on. And the thing that we have to understand is that organizations have their causes. And so it's, sometimes it's not always as easy to be able to partner with an organization if that's not really their cause or that's not what their intention is or that's not what they're doing. So again, I do see the value in this. And I, but I do think that it needs to be a combination of council with representation of, of staff as well as representation from the community to make it the best. Was that a motion?
I, I would, I would make it one. I just want to make sure we've had all the discussions. So let me give Councilmember Starbuck the floor.
Thank you. I'm just going to make a couple of comments here. Public safety not accepting money. I'm kind of floored with that. The ones that need the most funding are turning away the funding is what you've just told me. They don't want to accept money. We've been successful as a city in, in donations. We've received property, library, the Benton Trust, Mark's House. I mean, the list could go on and on if I thought about it. We're not that successful on just routine grants. Now we're going to go trying to get routine grants, accept normal donations that we do receive, and we're going to also use staff now and council and whoever else they decide to go ahead and run a nonprofit on this. I just, I don't know. It seems like we got a flat spot in the tire here.
So Councilmember Ball?
Yeah, I would just say to Councilwoman Cordova's point that each, each nonprofit does have a cause and a mission. I would just submit that there is a potential that if this was to be, if we could stand this up at the city, that mission could be pretty broad. And it is to transparently move Lompoc forward. It is to connect dots with where resources might be and to put those into the community where we can see some benefit. I would just say to the point of perhaps the police or fire not being okay with taking funds at the moment, that makes perfect sense considering that we're talking in terms of cannabis money. We're talking about something that is still federally illegal. So perhaps the city attorney, would you mind elaborating or city manager on the differences of, I don't want to call it a loophole, but there is a workaround. How does that work? How might that work?
Do you want to answer first? So I, I won't say I'm the expert by any means. I don't know if it's, there's a loophole, but one on the public safety piece, to answer Councilman Starbuck's concern is just the, the appearance of police taking anything from what was until not too long ago considered an illegal drug type of a situation. They want to make sure there's a distance between them. So that's why if we had our own nonprofit, we could do that acceptance as a city and keep that, that distance there. That's, you know, that's really the, the biggest piece. I guess I would say too that when this was first brought up, it was to be the engine for obtaining more grants. The side benefit is if such as the cannabis or any other group wants to donate, we have that ability too. That's sort of the extra perk on the side of it. But I don't know if that answered your question or if.
It did, thank you.
So I'll go back to my proposal and actually make it a motion. So my motion would be that we form a nonprofit associated with the city via our charter, that it be a seven-member board, that that board consists of a public safety chair from our public safety commission, the chair from our beautification and appearance commission, the library chair from our library commission, and the chair from our Parks and Rec. That it include one council member and that it have two business community members, preferably one from a large corporate environment and one from a, a small business. But to get started, very happy to have two corporate members of any size join it and that it be required to follow the Brown Act. And there were a few other questions, so I'll go ahead and say the frequency of the board meetings, it's recommended at least once a year. I would say require two meetings a year and that after that, it's as many as needed to review or have additional discussions about what might be needed. And that staff be, city staff is the support and that's the in-kind support that we give to the nonprofit. And that any amendments to the charter have to come back to the city for approval and clarity of language about the funds being utilized to improve our city through our, our city structure be included in that. That is my motion. Councilmember Cordova.
I have a question. So that's assuming that each of the chairs of those commissions is willing to participate. What happens if someone says, hey, I don't want to take on another responsibility?
We could set it up so that they have to participate. That's just part of being the chair of their commission, like it's a responsibility of being their chair. And if they don't show up to the nonprofit meetings, then they'll just be absent. Or we could set it up so that if a, if any person who's appointed to the board decides they don't want to serve, then the council can choose maybe another person from that, in that same category. So another person from the beautification commission or another person from the public safety commission.
I would say that would be a great option is that if the chair chooses not to have that additional service, that the committee, that particular committee, say the Parks and Rec committee, go back and discuss and nominate from its membership who would represent from it. I think it's important that those particular committees specifically have a lot of opportunity for these NGOs and they need to be at the table when those grants are being reviewed, when those grants are being formulated and providing that feedback. And they are liaisons back to those committees and those committees can have discussions at their level. So it, it, I think, actually gives more to do to those groups. A lot of the committees and commissions have been stating, we, we don't feel like we're, we're getting enough done. We don't feel like we're able to move things forward and that we have contribution to things. And I think if they have a required position on this, and it's only required as two meetings a year or meetings as needed, then it, it does give additional power to those committees and commissions to have discussions and push things forward through the NGO. So I, I was really trying that two-part of let's, let's find an easy way to fill some of these positions, but also that feedback I was getting from the different committees and commissions about, we want to have more input and we want to have more purpose. And that's, that's probably the key word is have purpose, so.
And then second question, would we adopt this as, as to move forward with a nonprofit organization? Or would we first be able to kind of see what that structure is going to look like and, and then vote it in?
We would be bringing back, we'd be drafting the bylaws and the charter and we'd be bringing that back to council to give the final go-ahead to, to form the corporation.
Okay, so then the majority of the council would have to accept it or make recommendations for modifications at that time?
That's right.
Okay, and then, oh God, there was something else. Now I feel like I'm losing my mind.
Just to, while you're thinking, just to clarify on the mayor's point, you said that if the chair did not want to serve, then the commission would go back and choose someone else from the commission to serve. But they'd really be nominating a person to the council to choose to serve, right?
Correct, correct. But it would, it would allow that, say the Parks and Rec commission, to have a discussion amongst themselves, nominate somebody to come back to the council to appoint from their commission to represent that position on the.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I may, just as a, just what happens in case is if nobody else wants to, whatever commission it is, they, everyone says no, that you might recommend that it comes back to council and you, as a council, could select another person doesn't on that commission just in case none of them wanted to be on it.
I think leaving us some flexibility, as we've learned with other committees and commissions, that anytime a position is unfilled, that it come back to council and we can choose to appoint either a business community member or reach out to another committee or commission to fill that spot. And so leaving that flexibility for us is, is a lesson learned given some of our other committees and commissions tightness.
Okay, so continuing on then, I would be in support if we could amend the motion to include an annual report to the council because I think there's some validity to some of the concerns that have been raised by some of the council. And an annual report that would, that would provide the council with information as to the number of grants that were applied for, the number of grants that were actually received and the projects that were successfully funded and how that money was spent, along with the number of meetings that were held annually.
Happy to add that, you're absolutely right. Did you get all that, Jeff?
Got it, yes.
All right. So that's my motion amended and I just need a second. You got it?
That was my second.
That was your second. All right, so that has been moved and seconded. Whose light was on first? Councilmember Ball? Oh, you're good? Okay, Councilmember Vega.
I just want to make a comment here. Councilmember Ball talked about transparency. I wanted to make a point here, this is politics at work. Why don't we just be honest here and we know that this is a method and a way to accept donations from cannabis industry. As you said, that we're going to take advantage of the cannabis industry, okay? Councilwoman Cordova said she would be 100% against that method, but I'm reading between the lines here and I'm not throwing stones or anything. What I'm trying to do is be clear here. You talked about transparency, let's be transparent. What is this about? This is about being able to take donations from the cannabis industry so that the city can control it because they just admitted that they didn't want it to go to fire and police because it didn't look right. And I just want to say this as a statement so the public can see that I understand because what I hear is I see too much talk about pushing something here. If you read all of this, there's no methods for delaying this or whatever, it's just pick a structure. You know, we, we have a hard time filling our commissions, our committee members. I don't think it's going to amount to many more grants because we already have a structure in place. But I just want to be honest here, let's be transparent what we're doing. We're trying to create something so which we can take donations from the cannabis industry.
Actually, it's not. This discussion started, I will, I'll be very transparent with you.
Yeah, be transparent, please.
This discussion started while Councilmember Cordova, Councilmember Ball and myself were all members of the Economic Development Committee over eight years ago. We identified the fact that many of our departments were not getting the additional funding that existed because our community lacked an NGO that could apply for these things and that we did not have some of the tools our neighboring communities did that were being very successful, such as Santa Maria's Play Organization and how they were able to fund so much more, so quicker and so much sooner than us. My commissioner on the Parks and Rec brought it up. Despite being on the Park Pool, Park Rec Foundation, he was willing to push it forward and it started as a full discussion at Parks and Rec Commission. at Parks and Rec Commission about having a city-related park and rec fund simply because the Park Pool Rec Foundation doesn't do improvements, doesn't do maintenance, and we need that desperately. But in the discussion with other groups in our community, there is an ask for, I want to support, but I want to make the donation to the city, but it's not Parks and Recs I'm worried about. I want to make a donation to help the police department, but I want to see it go into the general fund and be spent on this rather than the foundation not being able to raise enough to buy the equipment. I'd rather have my company make a direct donation to the city. And while that can be done, the write-off is very different when it comes from a nonprofit. It's also a tool, again, to access a series of grants that we cannot without an NGO. And again, the burden on some of our local nonprofits is that they too don't have enough staff to work with us and manage that. So again, this is not solely to take dollars from the cannabis industry. There are a lot of other industries in our community that want to give and want to contribute and they will if there is a path forward. So again, I think that you are being the one who's being disingenuous and not being transparent when this discussion has been going on for over eight years.
Well, you know, that's not really true and I don't really agree with what your statements were. What I'm saying is creating another structure from which we're having trouble filling other structures is not something that I think we should be doing right now. It's not that, I just said the timing was a little bit different. So I said, that's what I'm saying. Creating more structures where we're asking people to volunteer and be a part of something when we're already having trouble in other areas. Plus, the expenditure part of it is what my statement was. So I'm not here to argue, I understand the method, so just let me close like that.
Thank you. Councilmember Cordova.
So I will vouch to the fact that this is something that I heard when I was on the Economic Development Committee long before I came or even had dreams of being on this council. That is something that was discussed, that is fact and I can state that as true from my perspective. I think the concerns are valid and I don't steer away from that. I think transparency will come in the form of the council receiving that annual report to be able to confirm if we're really applying for grants or if we're just a donation engine for any one single source or industry within our community. And anyone that knows me knows that I have a problem with us labeling just the cannabis industry in any way because I feel that it is not our job to sit here and take advantage of any industry for that matter, whether it, it doesn't matter the industry. That's not what I'm here to do, to take advantage of anyone. However, what is our job is to ensure that we can properly service and regulate any industry, especially the cannabis industry because that requires regulation. And us not being able to do that is something completely different than what we're talking about today with regards to taking any kind of money. So I really want to make it clear that I am not on anybody's side and I sure as heck, and I'm not in favor of saying that this is a sole engine for the cannabis industry because if that was the case, I wouldn't be voting for it. And I believe that the transparency will come in the form of the report coming back to the council with the items listed and that will tell the true tale.
Councilmember Ball?
So I agree with almost all of that. I think it's incredibly important to have that annual report and that transparency. I'll be very clear, I'm not at all suggesting that this is only, only to be used for cannabis, but let's not be silly here. This is the biggest elephant in the room. And if we want to be honest about it, let's go backwards and remember that a prior council found the, I don't want to call it the will, but they lost sight of making sure that there was equitable taxation and regulation of this industry. This industry knows, knows that they're getting a great deal and they've offered to step up in many ways and try to help. This is one of the ways they can do that. I don't know how many people I've talked to that does not connect the dots with a positive resource with cannabis being here. The industry wants to show that they're making money and they can help us actually turn the corner on some things. So I'm not just saying this is only for cannabis, but this is a big player here and we have to figure out how to get things done at the city level. We haven't done it to this point, so, and we've had nonprofits for a long time and we still haven't found the collaborative way to take advantage or, I don't know, if that's the right word, take advantage, but to benefit from this industry. The citizens that vote want to see a benefit if we're going to have cannabis here. And because we can't yet get to the ordinance and update it and make sure there's fairer taxation, let's be transparent. We need the resource. The people that voted say we need the resource.
Councilmember Cordova?
Okay, so respectfully, I have a problem with this because, again, we should not be looking at this as a, an engine to take advantage of an industry or donations from an industry. Our job, that should be completely separate and our job should be to properly be taxing or regulating any industry in this community. And that, to me, is a totally separate agenda item. So if we keep bringing it back to that, then I have a problem with it because if this is going to be an engine for us to be able to take money from an industry that is not being, that we are openly admitting to the fact that we are not properly taxing and we are not properly regulating, I have a problem with that. I have a problem with that.
Does that change your second?
Yes.
All right, so that is not its intention. It is literally part of an ongoing discussion that was started over eight years ago that is a recognized issue and it is an opportunity for not just an industry, but many in our community at all different levels to make contributions to and generate additional revenue. So my motion still stands, I am still looking for a second. She just pulled her second back, so.
So I'll give you a second and if anyone's open to it, I'll submit again. And I don't mean to be too, just one target here. But if there is openness and we see after a year or two of these reports, if we find that this is only benefiting or we're only benefiting from one industry and we're not seeing grants, you know, being applied for and being granted and lots of other benefits that we see with this, then, you know, let's make that adjustment. That'd be my two cents.
I believe that we reserve, as the council creating it, we reserve the right to dissolve a nonprofit at any time we choose. Is that correct?
Well, the board of the nonprofit would decide to dissolve itself.
So we could put that in as part of a review that in two years, we review and ask the board to consider whether or not it is meeting its requirements and whether or not to recommend dissolution if it is not meeting its charter.
That's right.
Thank you. So that, I will amend the motion to include that if you will accept that as part of my second. Councilmember Cordova?
One last question before I place my vote and we move forward with that. If, so adopting this today and moving forward with it, the bylaws and the structure of the nonprofit will come before the council. What happens if the council cannot decide at that time, cannot agree with what is going on or with what is brought before the council?
Then nothing will be formed. It can only be formed when the council approves the documents that staff brings to them.
So by adopting this today, it allows us the opportunity to move forward, construct the concept of the nonprofit and then bring back before the council one more time the ability to decide, this is the structure, how does this council vote?
That's right.
Yeah, this would just give us the starting point to say, work on the documentation, bring it forth to you to have another discussion and look at what's been presented.
Understood, thank you.
You're good?
No, I have one question.
Absolutely.
I just want to confirm that the meeting place for this body will be this chamber.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other questions or clarity needed before we take a vote? Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes three zero, thank you. We will now go to the rest of, three two. Did I say three zero, three two? Three two. All right. Any written communications, Madam Clerk?
Nothing more than you've already received.
Thank you. We will now open the floor to our final oral communications. You have two minutes to speak to issues before the city. The number to call is 805-875-8201. Remember to mute your TV, PC, or radio when your call is put through. Remember to mute your TV, PC, or radio when your call is put through. Seeing no one call, we will close the final oral communication and bring it back to council. Councilmember Vega?
Nothing to report, thank you.
Councilmember Ball?
Let's see, should I do a council request first or do...
You choose your Russian roulette order.
All right, let's see, a couple of quick announcements. There's a pet wellness clinic happening on the seventh, that's at Ryan Park. I think there's information on Facebook from, what's the group called? Paws and...
Care for Paws, not Or...
Care for Paws. Anyway, they're going to be offering some vaccinations, some shots, microchipping, and lots of other services right there in the park. So for those that have pets that need to catch up on some things or just need to make sure their animal is in good shape, that might be a good option for you. And then on, Janelle, Mayor, you may have to help me, but the State of Annenberg is coming up, I think that's tomorrow.
It's Thursday.
Thursday, thank you. Thursday, I believe at 11:30 and then the main event starts at noon. I believe that's on Zoom. But again, you can get information from that through the Chamber of Commerce as well. And then I just had one council request, if possible. And that is, especially after this past week, the county had a pretty serious discussion on the issue of homelessness. And I'd like for us to come back with some sort of start to a plan on collaborating with the county on the issue of housing. I strongly believe after listening and learning and watching everything and from several conversations, we can do lots of short-term things, but this is a long-term issue and in my estimation, housing is a big issue there and something we can't handle alone. So we'll take that collaborative effort with the county. So that would be my request.
City manager, did I see correctly that at the next meeting, we will have a presentation by the SB CAG regarding arena numbers which do affect housing and will affect us having to bring back and have a full discussion on our housing numbers anyway?
We have a few items coming forward. We have the SB CAG presentation and then soon after that, we will actually have a presentation from the county regarding homelessness and housing. So we have quite a few things coming up. It's part of the kind of annual process and all the new funding that's coming out.
Okay, does that satisfy what you're looking for or did you want something in addition?
It may. What's the timeline for some of those discussions coming back?
The SB CAG, I believe, is the next meeting. And then the county, they contacted, we had a meeting today. They talked about assembling a staff report for council consideration on some partnerships. So that'll probably be an April meeting.
Okay, do you have a, are you assuming that there will be a discussion specifically about either temporary or permanent transitional housing as a part of that discussion?
Dependent on their funding source. They're looking for a countywide collaborative on their initiative to address homelessness countywide.
Okay, as long as that's coming back to us, that's great. Thank you.
Councilmember Cordova?
So I have a council request. So I think much discussion has been brought forth in regards to the cannabis industry. I would like to have staff bring back a report for our current status with the cannabis industry as far as what tax they are paying for, the difference between the retail versus cultivation and the other side of it, I should say. And that way, the council, as well as the public, can know exactly what we currently have. I think the report should also be able to identify the successes that the city is having with the proper regulation of the industry and how each of our departments, whether it be our building department, our fire department, or, I don't know, our police department, on what those, what our ordinance calls for us to be doing and whether we are doing that. And consideration then from the council as to how to move forward in the best interest of the community since we keep talking about the community wanting to see the benefits of having the cannabis industry here. So if the council sees that fit, I would seek support for that council request.
If I may, can we add that as part of the cannabis review, the ordinance review on the cannabis that's coming back? Our timeline is going to hopefully be April 6th, let me just make sure. Yeah, it'll be, one of the two meetings in April. Would that be, we can just combine the two into one, would that work?
Will your staff report have all the elements that I just requested or can it be at least considered to ensure that we don't just get a generic report but that we actually get factual information for the knowledge of the community as well as for the consideration of this council?
It would include all of this and more because we'll be talking about what, where we are short versus, I'd like to say successes, but I know it's not quite there yet. So it'll have everything you just mentioned and more in there.
And you're positive it's coming back in April?
Yes.
Because I know I brought this up before and I was told that there would be also, this report was coming and it's been quite some time ago, but I understand, I understand. And as long as it's coming back in April and it covers the request, then I think that we're okay then.
All right, Councilmember Starbuck?
No reports.
Thank you. I attended the Transmission Agency of Northern California's monthly meeting, the Santa Barbara County Area Government Meeting, monthly meeting, the Northern California Power Agency's Legislative and Regulations Commission, the Executive and the Regular Commission Meeting for NCPA, as well as an invitation out to Vandenberg Air Force Base to share what the work has been accomplished at SURF. To that point, I want to thank Vandenberg Air Force Base and the Coastal Commission, the Fish and Wildlife, both at the California and the federal level, for all the work that they have done to open the beach back up all summer for us. I know people are frustrated when they hear that restrictions still exist for the plover. But what has changed is the beach is not closed. They are still required to protect the nesting areas. They are still required to cordon off only a half mile of beach in order to protect those plovers because it is federal land. But all they're doing is tracking and issuing the fines associated with violating those restrictions. The beach is not going to close. Do you have full access up and down the coast? No. Again, that's something they don't even control because the federal government says it's a federal property, these mandates have to be followed. But they are working very, very hard to maintain and open and keep the beach access available year-round to us. Their staff is working very hard, they need docents. If you're interested, you can reach out to the base. I'll get the information to our public information officer and she can put that on social media if you want to be a docent. They have individuals out there that are monitoring this and they do it by drone. They do it on horseback and they do it at the gate. They have cleaned up the signage. The signage has gotten very, very clear. So we just ask that our community work hard in partnership with the base to honor those restrictions, knowing that it means your beach is absolutely open to you. It just has some restrictions. We have heard much about Vaughn's closing and it is a disappointment. Unfortunately, it is a corporate decision. We do know that they are investing in the Albertsons, so you will be seeing improvements and changes at the local Albertsons. And we have a contact with the chamber and the chamber is responsible for recruiting and making sure that empty spaces get filled. and making sure that empty spaces get filled. So they have a contract with an organization we had, and we hope that they are working hard to fill that space, and we look forward to hearing that news. Committees and commissions, as you heard, can sometimes be difficult for some of our members to fill. We are going through a transition where you can be appointed by the district you live in, by members of the board. We need to see your applications by March 8th. So if any of the commissions, from public safety, to beautification, appearance, to planning commission, to, not the library, drawing a blank, Parks and Rec, Human Services, I'm missing one. And as a result, get your applications in. It's posted on our website. We will also have our PIO share it on social media. And we look forward to having members from across our community represent their neighborhoods and advocate for the things you're passionate in. And I will look at all the applications as I appoint at large, but again, reach out to the district representative on the dais that you are interested in, and get your applications in. We will adjourn this meeting until the next regular meeting at 6:30 PM on March 16th, 2021.